Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. The meeting will convene at six-thirty P M. and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you are able to hear any discussion.
Did you get your computer to work at home?
Yes.
Good, perfect, okay. I didn't know for a minute. Okay. John Crowe sent you.
Sorry for the delay, everyone. We have to wait for streaming to start. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. The meeting will convene at six-thirty P M. and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you are able to hear any discussion. Um, did you get your computer to work at home?
Yes.
Good, perfect, okay. I didn't know for a minute. Okay. Um, John Crowe sent you. Sorry for the delay, everyone. We have to wait for streaming to start. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero-zero-zero-one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six-thirty P M. in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. Please stand and join us for the Presentation of Colors and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Burke High School's J R O T C.
Oh, arch. Oh, oh. Ready, face. Oh. The colors. Freeze and arms. Hold, arms. Ready, face. Oh, arch. Please join me in reciting the nation's pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Vice President Erdenberger will lead us in the O P S vision and mission statement.
The vision, every student, every day, prepared for success, and the mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you, Vice President Erdenberger. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger.
Present.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Present.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Present.
Tealyn.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the board, those here in attendance and watching from home, especially our school spotlight folks from Blackburn. This week, we celebrate our exceptional educators and every staff member who contributes to the success of our students in college, career, and life. Happy Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week to our community. Last evening, we kicked off the week. Myself, Mrs. Cracky, Ms. Erdenberger, and Dr. Holman attended the O E A Laurel Celebration. We appreciate it being invited and certainly was a wonderful way to celebrate those with twenty-five years of service and though retirees as well as special award winners. I would like to note that there are four teachers sitting at this table. Mrs. Cracky is a former teacher. I'm a former teacher. Dr. Holman is a former elementary teacher and a current higher education teacher, and Mrs. Erdenberger is a former teacher. I think that's kind of remarkable that we do have four teachers on our Board of Education, and certainly, we know the journey, we understand the commitment, we also understand the personal sacrifice that happens every day in the classroom with our educators. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Tomorrow, members from our district leadership team will start the day visiting our schools and office locations to express our gratitude in person. Though no thank you is enough for the work our teachers and staff do each day, we are immensely proud of the caring, committed adults who make our system go for children. Speaking of exceptional staff and students, the Academy of Engineering and Design at North High has earned model status from the National Career Academy Coalition. This is N C A C.'s highest designation. North High is the third school and fourth academy in Omaha Public Schools to earn top honors. Bryan High's Urban Agriculture Academy received model status in two thousand eighteen. Benson High's Health Professions and Freshmen Academies earned model status in two thousand twenty. As we expand access to programs like these for all students through college and career academies and pathways, it demonstrates that Omaha Public Schools is already doing the work with excellence and earning national attention for it. Calling our bilingual teachers and administrators, our district is launching a new opportunity to grow your leadership skills. It doesn't matter the language, you just have to have a second one at bilingual proficiency. The Omaha Bilingual Leaders Preparation Program develops critical leadership skills to support multilingual students and families in our area. It is open to teachers, it's open to administrators, and those in other positions who would like to, or certificated, who would like to be in the leaders program. It is a collaboration with the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, the New York City Leadership Academy, and the Omaha Public Schools. Folks who participate will also receive a mentor that is bilingual in the same language from around the country. Participants have the opportunity to make an immediate impact through this year-long residency. Applications are open through May sixteenth. Staff may visit district postings or one O P S to learn more. It's really critically important that we have leaders available to support our communities, especially those who can relate to them in their native language. Congratulations are in order for the more than twenty Omaha Public School students who are state journalism medalists, including Burke and Bryan High, which placed in the top fifteen teams. To Elias Cop and Emilio Para Garcia of Central High for earning an outstanding performance award for instrumental solos at the district music contest. To Hannah Polak of Benson High for earning an outstanding performance award for vocal solos at the district music contest. To MacMillan Middle School's seventh and eighth grade academic pentathlon teams for scoring highest among all states in their region and continuing a more than ten-year tradition of national representation at the United States Academic Pentathlon. I did get some information that MacMillan is, has placed really high, and I can't wait for them to be our school spotlight. To MacMillan Middle School as well for earning second place at the Nebraska Science Olympiad. To the more than thirty student medalists at the Nebraska Science Olympiad. And lastly, to Oscar Castillo, dual-language math teacher at South, for earning the U N O Department of Teacher Education's Outstanding Graduate Student Award. Congratulations to you, Senor Castillo. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Board members? Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. I just wanted to reflect a bit on our board workshop and thank the board and the administration for some thoughtful discussion we had around teacher retention and, and behavior disciplinary events in schools. You know, there was some, some good data, which, you know, obviously had some limitations. We talked a bit about that, and we had a nuanced discussion about, you know, the fact that there might be some indications that, percentage-wise, we are actually down from the twenty-nineteen year in disciplinary events, but that also doesn't always reflect completely the experience in the building. So, again, I just wanted to thank the board and the administration for that conversation.
Ditto. Mr. Head?
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. I just wanted to take a moment to echo Dr. Logan's comments and just thank our staff. I know it's the first day of Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you to all of our teachers. Anybody watching, please, you know, shoot your, shoot your child's teacher an email this week and thank them as well. I know it's been a rough, long couple of years for our, our teachers and staff, my wife being one of them. I might get to, get to hear about it on a daily basis, but, you know, thank you to all of our teachers and staff for everything they do.
Vice President Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Holman. I had the pleasure of supervising the bouncy castle at the Jackson Elementary School Family Night last week, which was quite fun, and bingo night at Beals Elementary. So, that's my social life, in case you cared. A couple items on the consent agenda, because I do, I do like to highlight a couple of the items on the consent agenda. For those of you that don't know, the consent agenda are items that have been approved, reviewed, and approved ahead of time by the board. So, it is not that we don't, you know, this huge list shows up and we just say, okay. These are items that are basically pre-approved, one, each of us gets our own copy ahead of time, and as a result, they are sort of quickly dispatched in the meeting, but that doesn't mean they are anything less than very important or interesting. One of the items I found interesting was we are buying a hundred and sixty-five R-two-D-two cleaning machines, little robot machines that go around and clean the hallways and the bathrooms. I haven't actually seen them in operation, but it's my understanding that every school will get at least one of these, and depending on how many floors there are and how much space there is, they may get more than one. So, a hundred and sixty-five R-two-D-twos is how I like to think of it. The other thing is that items one, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are all examples of how the district has decided to apply its ESRS money, you might think of it as COVID money, the money to apply to our summer learning program, next level learning, a variety of fun reading materials that we don't use during the rest of the year, a couple of camps for kids to do some exploring, and a, something that's going to involve a Lego operation. So, that's item one thirteen. So, there's going to be some good times this summer, making good use of our ESRS money, and I am told that there will, there will be some sort of a presentation later in the summer, so keep your calendar open to go check out Legos, I guess, or whatever it is for science fair we're going to have. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we finish board comments, just want to give a huge shout-out to all of our teachers. Happy Teachers Appreciation Week. We love you. We appreciate every single thing that you do for our district and for our students and for our families every single day, so thank you so much. Mrs. Cracky?
And a card is always welcome, a note is always welcome. That might be a good day to bring an apple, something like that, because it really means a lot when somebody recognizes you on that day or that week and brings you a card or something real sweet like that. It's, we appreciate the children every day, but we also like, the staff likes to be appreciated too, and that means all the staff. You know, we, we used to just have the paras, the principals, and then we got to the teachers too, so now we're appreciating everyone, and that's the way it should be. So, I hope you have a good week.
Thank you. Moving on now to treasures report, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Dr. Logan, members of the board, and Superintendent Logan. Tonight's O P S Proud Spotlight features our Blackburn program and its students for wonderful community service and outreach they completed this year. So, to begin, I will welcome Program Director Michaela Jackson to the podium.
Good evening. Good evening. I am both humbled and honored to welcome our Blackburn students and staff. It is, never a day goes by that they aren't doing things that are second to none. The challenges that they face and have overcome and continue to be just ample members of our society and giving back to our community shall not go unrecognized. So, thank you for taking the time today to recognize them. I would like to introduce the staff and students that I have brought along with us today, instrumental leaders in what we've done with this particular event, which was our holiday gift-giving basket and dinner box assembly event. I've got Mrs. Lakeisha Bonham, school social worker at Blackburn, and Dr. Susie Busby, counselor. And I brought along with the following students. I've got Matty Jorgensen, senior, soon-to-be graduate, Blackburn. I've got Lulu Soliende, who will be graduating next year. I've got Kentress Palmer, who will be graduating this year from Blackburn. Darian Brown, also a graduate this year, and Demarius Brown, another graduate from Blackburn this year. I will leave it to them to let them share with you what we have to present tonight. Thank you once again for honoring us.
Good evening and welcome. Everybody can come on up to the podium. Don't be shy. Oh, I heard you're not shy. Welcome.
Each year, when the holiday season approaches, Blackburn wants their students and families to feel honored and blessed. This is how the Holiday Dinner Box Assembly Event came to life.
It is a time for fellowship, allowing all to build a relationship while taking part in assembling the food boxes and winning prizes and gifts during a raffle that happens in the same evening.
Turkeys, hams, mac and cheese, boxed potatoes, boxed stuffing, cranberries, green, corn, ma, cake mix, frosting, boxes of Jiffy Cornbread, and canned gravy.
These items are donated by the community, parents, staff, and members. Churches and other donations also include gift cards, holidays, decorations, assorted candy, and cookies and more.
We are very blessed each year with wonderful community partners that help us bring this event to fruition. A big Blackburn thank you goes out to the following. Home Depot, Seventy-second Street, Krispy Kreme, Phil's Foodway, Hy-Vee from Cass and Hundred Fifty-sixth and Maple, Godfathers on Saddle Creek, Tribe Church, Pastor Brian Page and the Pleasant Green Baptist Church, Greater New Hope Church, New Rising Star Church, Prince of Peace Church, People's Mission, Tabernacle Baptist and Council Bluffs, Rising Star, Judge Chad Brown and his whole family, Dominique Morgan, and many Blackburn staff, friends, and family.
Thank you for having us tonight and hope to see you next year at the Blackburn Holiday Dinner Box Assembly Event.
Just really quick, this is an event that we had no idea was going to take off like this. When we started this out, Dr. Busby and myself, we just thought we wanted to do something amazing for our families. We had no idea we would still be here, and many of these people that they mentioned, they've been donating to our program for the last five, six years, so it's been an amazing thing. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all so much for being here. Let's give them all a round of applause, please. Questions, colleagues? Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Dr. President, Dr. Holman. Apologize, I'm a little head cold there. Thank you all for presenting. I just have two questions. The first one is, how long has this program been going on? And have you counted how much, like, food has been given away over time to the community?
Oh, my goodness, it's been so much. We actually started probably about five years ago. Oh, sorry. Excuse me. We started out probably about five years ago. You know what? As far as the actual numbers of what we've actually collected, that's something that we can look at, because we do have that documentation, but it's really grown. It started out really small, but each year, we try to give each family. We started out with twenty-five families, and we're now up to fifty families that we're able to serve each year.
Wow.
Including all of those items that they mentioned.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. That impact over five years is very significant. I have just one question I would love for all the students, if you guys don't mind, all to answer, except for the Kansas City shirt. I don't like the Chiefs. This program, this event, how has it impacted you, and how, how do you think it has impacted our community? The mic is yours.
Like, how it impacted me personally?
Yep. And then how do you think it has impacted our entire community as well?
Well, I think that, you know, a lot of people don't have the privilege of having, like, like, enough money to have these kind of celebrations, so for having that assistance, it made, you know, we, we at home have other stuff that we need to handle, so being able to have a full meal with our family was such a blessing, and now helping other people like that, they can put more money in taking care of their kids instead of, but also having that holiday spirit and holiday, like, you know, giving us something to enjoy, boosting morale, and not stressing out people that don't need to be stressed out.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
To me, I feel like it's a, a good time to, like, bring everybody together, and, like, everybody don't get to celebrate with their families, so you might could be able to come to the school and, like, have a dinner with us or something.
Great, Brad, I appreciate that.
The premise of the event is that everyone gets to take something home, but we call it the Assembly Event, because we literally assemble the boxes together. We, we, spelled Ms. Bonham mostly, gathers a lot of the items, and we get it all.
do some exploring, and a something that's going to involve a Lego operation. So that's Item 113. So there's going to be some good times this summer, making good use of our ESRS money, and I am told that there will be some sort of a presentation later in the summer. So keep your calendar open to go check out Legos, I guess, or whatever it is, Science Fair we're going to have. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we finish Board comments, just want to give a huge shout out to all of our teachers. Happy Teachers Appreciation Week. We love you. We appreciate every single thing that you do for our district and for our students and for our families every single day. So thank you so much. Mrs. Crackey?
And a card is always welcome. A note is always welcome. That might be a good day to bring an apple, something like that, because it really means a lot when somebody recognizes you on that day or that week and brings you a card or something real sweet like that. We appreciate the children every day, but we also like, the staff likes to be appreciated too, and that means all the staff. You know, we used to just have the paras, the principals, and then we got to the teachers too, so now we're appreciating everyone, and that's the way it should be. So I hope you have a good week.
Thank you. Moving on now to Treasures Report, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening. President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Dr. Logan, members of the board. The financial statements for the period ended March 31st, 2022 have been finalized and submitted for your review.
Fantastic. Thank you. Now we'd like to welcome our school spotlight. Mr. Maskell's here this evening to share with us about our school spotlight students. Good evening.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the board, and Superintendent Logan. Tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight features our Blackburn program and its students for wonderful community service and outreach they completed this year. So to begin, I will welcome Program Director Michaela Jackson to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am both humbled and honored to welcome our Blackburn students and staff. It is, never a day goes by that they aren't doing things that are second to none. The challenges that they face and have overcome and continue to be just ample members of our society and giving back to our community shall not go unrecognized. So thank you for taking the time today to recognize them. I would like to introduce the staff and students that I have brought along with us today, instrumental leaders in what we've done with this particular event, which was our holiday gift-giving basket and dinner box assembly event. I've got Mrs. Lakeisha Bonham, School Social Worker at Blackburn, and Dr. Susie Busby, Counselor. And I brought along with the following students. I've got Matty Jorgensen, Senior, soon-to-be graduate Blackburn. I've got Lulu Soliende, who will be graduating next year. I've got Kentress Palmer, who will be graduating this year from Blackburn. Darian Brown, also a graduate this year, and Demarius Brown, another graduate from Blackburn this year. I will leave it to them to let them share with you what we have to present tonight. Thank you once again for honoring us.
Good evening and welcome. Everybody can come on up to the podium. Don't be shy. Oh, I heard you're not shy. Welcome.
Each year when the holiday season approaches, Blackburn wants their students and families to feel honored and blessed. This is how the Holiday Dinner Box Assembly Event came to life.
It is a time for fellowship, allowing all to build a relationship while taking part in assembling the food boxes and winning prizes and gifts during a raffle that happens in the same evening.
Turkeys, hams, mac and cheese, boxed potatoes, boxed stuffing, cranberries, green, corn, cake mix, frosting, boxes of Jiffy Cornbread, and canned gravy.
These items are donated by the community, parents, staff, and members. Churches and other donations also included gift cards, holidays, decorations, assorted candy, and cookies and more.
We are very blessed each year with wonderful community partners that help us bring this event to fruition. A big Blackburn thank you goes out to the following. Home Depot, 72nd Street, Krispy Kreme, Phil's Foodway, Hy-Vee from Cass and 156th and Maple, Godfathers on Saddle Creek, Tribe Church, Pastor Brian Page and the Pleasant Green Baptist Church, Greater New Hope Church, New Rising Star Church, Prince of Peace Church, People's Mission, Tabernacle Baptist and Council Bluffs, Rising Star, Judge Chad Brown and his whole family, Dominique Morgan, and many Blackburn staff, friends, and family.
Thank you for having us tonight and hope to see you next year at the Blackburn Holiday Dinner Box Assembly Event.
Just really quick, this is an event that we had no idea was going to take off like this. When we started this out, Dr. Busby and myself, we just thought we wanted to do something amazing for our families. We had no idea we would still be here, and many of these people that they mentioned, they've been donating to our program for the last five, six years. So it's been an amazing thing. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all so much for being here. Let's give them all a round of applause, please. Questions, colleagues? Mr. Snow?
Thank you. Doctor, President Dr. Holman, I apologize, I'm a little head cold there. Thank you all for presenting. I just have two questions. The first one is, how long has this program been going on? And have you counted how much, like, food has been given away over time to the community?
Oh, my goodness, it's been so much. We actually started probably about five years ago. Oh, sorry. Excuse me. We started out probably about five years ago. You know what? As far as the actual numbers of what we've actually collected, that's something that we can look at because we do have that documentation. But it's really grown. It started out really small, but each year we try to give each family. We started out with 25 families, and we're now up to 50 families that we're able to serve each year.
Wow.
Including all of those items that they mentioned.
Awesome. Thank you so much. That impact over five years is very significant. I have just one question I would love for all the students, if you guys don't mind, all to answer, except for the Kansas City shirt. I don't like the Chiefs. This program, this event, how has it impacted you and how do you think it has impacted our community? The mic is yours.
Like how it impacted me personally?
Yep. And then how do you think it has impacted our entire community as well?
Well, I think that, you know, a lot of people don't have the privilege of having, like, enough money to have these kind of celebrations. So for having that assistance, it made, you know, we at home have other stuff that we need to handle, so being able to have a full meal with our family was such a blessing. And now helping other people like that, they can put more money in taking care of their kids instead of, but also having that holiday spirit and holiday, like, you know, giving us something to enjoy, boosting morale, and not stressing out people that don't need to be stressed out.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
To me, I feel like it's a good time to, like, bring everybody together and, like, everybody don't get to celebrate with their families, so you might be able to come to the school and, like, have a dinner with us or something.
Brad, I appreciate that.
The premise of the event is that everyone gets to take something home, but we call it the Assembly Event because we literally assemble the boxes together. We, spelled Ms. Bonham mostly, gathers a lot of the items and we get it all together, and then we all come together to the table. We line both sides of the table, and we pass the box through the middle, and we put those items in it. So an empty box now with the love and conversation and elbow grease. By the other end, it's a full box. And then we take the table down after we fill the boxes, and once again, Ms. Bonham to the rescue, we have a giant table full of donated items, holiday gifts, blankets, pies, everything you can think of, and everyone that came in got a raffle ticket. And so everybody goes home with an actual gift, a whole bunch of food in their belly, and a whole box and a turkey or a ham. There is never a face without a giant smile and lots of hugs. It's by far the best day of the year for real.
It sounds like it's the best day, and it redefines community and shows how resilient and powerful we are and that we are in great hands with this next generation. So thank you again. I appreciate it.
Miss Crackey?
Except for Kansas City Chiefs. I'm sorry, I had to put that in there again.
I haven't been to Blackburn, but I'm going to go. I was just invited. And besides that, the principal used to sit by me at the football games with her dad, and that was really nice. And I'm sure she misses her dad, and you can still come to the football game, because I always looked for her with her hair, and I'd go and sit by her. And it was always a fun time, so I know that you enjoyed her. She said this is the place for her, and that's the way she is. Every child that went up the stadium stairs would stop, come over, and talk to her. It wasn't just like anybody else. I mean, they made an effort to come and talk to her, and then they ran up the steps and down the steps. And that's what they do when they go to the football games these days. It's not like in the olden days when they sat still in a chair and watched. But I will come out, and I just enjoyed you coming so much tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. Vice President Erdenberger?
I was just going to say that one of the privileges, one of the many privileges about being a board member is that we get to attend the graduations in the high schools that are in our district and/or any other high school graduations. You might, my district doesn't happen to have any high schools in it. So at this point in time, I am already slated to be at the Blackburn graduation, and I believe Mr. Snow will be there, and he will be speaking at your graduation. So we will very much be looking forward to seeing about half of you, this year anyway, walk across the stage, and congratulations for that. It's quite an accomplishment. It really is. Thank you.
It's a very intimate event, too, at the Salvation Army. It's a very intimate event there. And you usually get a performance. Dominique Morgan, just beautiful, so thank you.
Ms. Juarez?
Thank you. I would like to congratulate all of you who are going to graduate, and definitely thank you very much for inviting us to come and help you with the project. And please let Mr. Ray know so that we find out, you know, in advance on when you're going to do it, so we can help out. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you all so much again for being here. Thank you so much for your service to the community, to yourselves, to your families. We appreciate and love you all, and we'd like to have you all to come up and offer you an A-plus OPS pin for your pleasure. And you can start right here. Mr. Roberts, please.
Thanks for coming. I'm so happy to see you all over here, and good luck. Thank you for coming. And you're smiling a lot because you're having a good time. You're my person I love. I am miss you. And how I'm doing is, I think you have fun with relationships, but I always do in something.
I have to hide my shoes. I brought waders. I won't get you. They're not a picture. I'm just like, oh. I'm just like, oh. Should I ask? Yes. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, big smile this way. One, two, three. And we're asking one more. Okay, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you all. Congratulations. Thank you. (applause).
We have seven speakers who have submitted request to speak forms. The board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, please do not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide that to Mr. Ray. He will make sure that each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB 83 by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify themselves, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, unless their requirement is waived for security reasons. We have one person requesting a waiver tonight, and that is Michaela Kazir. And now I will entertain a motion to waive the requirement of that named individual to not state their name and address at the podium.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Head. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Smith?
No.
Snow?
No.
Tealyn?
Yes.
Cassidy?
No.
Erdenberger?
No.
Head?
Yes.
Holman?
No.
Juarez?
No.
Crackey?
No.
Two eyes.
Motion fails. We ask that all other individuals, including the person that requested, to please state and spell their first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you're here representing any particular organizations before you begin your public comment. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me and Mr. Ray, we'll come and get them for you. It is now 7 o'clock PM, and our first speaker tonight is Larry Storer.
Good evening. Larry Storer, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I didn't hear you refer to the Open Meetings.
I'm sorry. Would you spell your name, please, Mr. Storer?
S-T-O-R-E-R. I wrote it down for you.
We need for you to state and spell your name.
It's on the paper.
Mr. Storer, we need for you to state and spell your name. Thank you.
I didn't hear you refer to the Open Meetings Act that's posted over there. I'm not sure it's official, because that is a document you got from somebody else, not the state. You got that from the School Board Association, National Association. What's the National Association version doing up on our wall there? I didn't hear you refer to it. You don't refer to it here. I believe you're violating the Open Meetings Act, because you didn't. Okay? I'd like all of you to join the Douglas County Board and the City Council and citizens that want to take their government back in an open meeting, two-way discussion for a change, which you don't allow, to find out who the Open Meeting Act is for and what your rules are reasonable or they're not reasonable. Obviously, the boards around this town don't know what reasonable is for citizens. One hour to talk, but only five minutes per person. If there's only one person, why not give him the whole hour? You need to change the rules. Speaking of meetings, I went to a public meeting over the weekend. In fact, I went twice because the weather didn't allow full participation. About halfway between here and Lincoln, thousands and thousands of people, all shapes, sizes, colors, and denominations, whatever you want to call them. I didn't see anybody misbehaving. I had some conversations with some people of color, and we even talked about things like Black Lives Matter, CRT, and CSE, because a lot of these boards, like your people board, will not talk about it. You won't claim that you're supporting it in the libraries or whatever, and you admit you insinuate that you are not teaching it, that you haven't told the teachers to teach it. You're not firing them if they don't. But all across the country, people are getting their backs really up, and we've had it. We want CRT out of this country. We want CSE out of this country. Like it or not, those are examples of Marxism. They're pitting everybody against each other to destroy our culture. This is our culture. It's nobody else's culture. I grew up, I was not racist, but I'm being called racist even today at public bodies like this. The Douglas County Board has resolutions that say that. They say that publicly sometimes. We've had it. We're tired of it. We want it stopped. People across the country are coming after the school boards particularly because they're not teaching the kids what they're supposed to be teaching. And the kids aren't learning. Kids are killing themselves because they don't know what the hell's going on with these masks and these gender things. I don't have any problem telling what gender I am. It's very simple. Common sense.
Thank you, Mr. Storer. Next speaker for tonight is Michaela Kazir.
Hello, my name is Michaela Kazir. M-I-C-H-E-A-E-L-A-K-A-Z-O-R, and my address is 11619 Grand Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. And I am here today to speak and out and inform parents on the Equity and Diversity Fall 2020 Newsletter that I found at the link address of https://libguides OPS.org/equity/fall2020newsletter, period. On the Equity and Diversity Fall 2020 Newsletter, there are many resources given that explain what exactly OPS's definition of equity and diversity means, which are two key pillars of CRT. The two resources that I will speak on today is from the Racial Equity Institute. On the newsletter, the Racial Equity Institute was providing a workshop called Phase One Workshop: Foundational Training in Historical and Institutional Racism. The definition of this training, according to the newsletter, is this: Workshop Philosophy and Focus. Even those who are concerned about racial disparities in all American systems and institutions are challenged in their understanding of how racism remains alive and well, advantaging some while harming others. REI's two-day Phase One training is designed to develop the capacity of participants to understand racism in its institutional and structural forms. Moving the focus from individual bigotry and bias, the Racial Equity Institute's Phase One Workshop presents an historical, cultural, structural, and institutional analysis of racism. With a clear understanding of how institutions, systems, and culture are producing unjust and inadquitable outcomes, participants are better equipped to work for change. Phase One builds the capacity of participants to identify or better equipped to work for change. Phase One builds the capacity of participants to identify the root causes of disparity and establish goals and strategies based on that deeper understanding. Participants develop an analysis of institutional racism that helps their organization develop a common understanding of the problem and a common language to address it. This paradigm-shifting experience redefines issues of equity as they manifest in systems and institutions today and the attendant actions of individuals who seek to address them. The Phase One Workshop is the foundation of our training and organizing strategy. And another training that I found on this Racial Equity Institute is called the Groundwater, and its description is, "In this virtual webinar, RE organizers will use stories and data to present a perspective that racism is fundamentally structural in nature. By examining characteristics of modern-day racial inequity, the presentation introduces participants to an analysis that most find immediately helpful and relevant." The groundwater metaphor is designed to help practitioners at all levels internalize the reality that we live in a racially structured society, and that is what causes racial inequity. The metaphor is based on three observations. One, racial inequity looks the same across systems. Two, socioeconomic differences does not explain the racial inequity, and I work at a nonprofit, and I know that's not true. And three, inequities are caused by systems regardless of a people's culture or behavior. So no matter how a person behaves, it doesn't matter, because if a person succeeds, it's based on what color of skin they are. Embracing these truths helps leaders confront the reality that all our systems, institutions, and outcomes emanate from racial hierarchy on which the United States was built. In other words, we have a groundwater problem, and we need groundwater solutions. Starting there, we begin to unlock transformative change. According to what these training descriptions state, this training was done in order to implement these topics in the OPS school district. Equity is a core value of OPS as seen at the back of this room, and we see the result of it as there is rising misbehavior occurring in the OPS students that has been reported in the news and others have spoken about. Students are getting into fights, and instead of being suspended or expelled, according to what people have said, OPS is allowing them to stay in class. Is this what OPS wants to teach our children, that no matter the behavior or how they act, they will succeed? That's not how the real world works, and you're setting us up, our kids, to fail. And that is what equity teaches, and that's what equity looks like in practice. So, parents, you must stand up and teach your children truth and stand against the darkness that this school district is putting on your children. There is right and wrong, good and evil, and there is no middle ground. You must stand for your children boldly, knowing God will defend you, as Romans 8:31 states, "If God is for us, who can be against?"
Thank you. Next, we have Donnie Johnson.
You sure it's safe to come up there? I can look you down.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. I didn't have that much trouble in the Navy Academy, but that's okay. Freedom of speech. Donnie Johnson, 4928 North 52nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. The Johnson of Question Foundation and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 501(c)(3) programs. But I can, before I go into this process...
Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry. Would you spell your name, please?
Yes, ma'am. Donnie, D-O-N-N-I-E, Johnson. Oh, I take that back. Donnie R. Johnson. J-O-H-N-S-O-N. I forgot about this process. It's so much, as our hair continued to turn white, we can't recognize as much as we should. But I can tell you, when I was at MacMillan, I'm not so sure being suspended is a good thing, because I left school suspended eight times at MacMillan, but I ended up at Harvard and the Navy. For some reason, they kept making me come back. But that's another story. Anyway, number one, North Omaha needs a Peace Corps office in North Omaha. Number two, North Omaha needs United States Department of Agriculture offices in North Omaha. Number three, we ask incoming senior class Fall of 2022, '23 and incoming junior class of 2022, '23, summer job with the United States Postal Service, and junior and senior attending Douglas and Sarpy County Schools be allowed to work during Christmas break and spring break, and to work with the City of Omaha to help provide future jobs for summer youth and to help with very good labor experience. Class of 1968 up to class of 1974, we students always had good summer jobs through the City of Omaha Park and Recreation. In closing, we, the people of North Omaha, need to purchase or donate or block grant to acquire your school building at 30th names. This will allow...
This will allow more access to the international trade within African countries. So help them God for the young African-Americans willing to accept these new international, global jobs. I ask the state, federal government, and Nebraska state government, help the young adults aged 17 through 40, the same opportunities I receive from the United States of America. So help us, God. Because I learned a lot of wonderful things in Egypt and France and Ghana through the federal government, state government. So I said, you know what? I'm gonna let some of these young folks who cannot purchase a $3,000 round trip ticket, we'll send them through the Peace Corps. When they come back, they'll be like, Mr. Johnny Rogers, Mrs. Holman, Mrs. Logan, and Mr. Smith. And I thank you for helping me get my daughter from Burke High when she was at Burke. We got her in Harvard when I was here, and she decided to go to KU with her friends from the cheerleaders at Burke. But I remember we worked on that a few years back. She works at Union Pacific Railroad now. And she told me the other day, she said, Dad, I wish I had went on to Harvard. I said, I think I should have. We tried to get you in there, but KU is okay. Find out where they sell them the wheat. We'll sell it on the Mercantile Exchange and pay for the student loan.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Miller. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Miller. That's R-O-B-E-R-T-M-I-L-L-E-R, and I reside at 7301 North 101st, 107th Avenue in Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Superintendent Dr. Logan, and members of the Board. My name is Robert Miller, and I am the President of the Omaha Education Association. I'd like to thank Dr. Holman, Ms. Erdenberger, Mrs. Crackie, and Mrs. Juarez for attending the 2022 Laurels Night last evening. After pausing the in-person celebration the past two years, it was great to be in person honoring the retirees and those who are celebrating 25 years within OPS. Thank you to Mr. Wakefield and Susan Christofferson, and the various principals that attended our event, and supported their staff. The month of May brings many opportunities to celebrate various individuals: moms, graduates both high school and college, retirees, nurses. But this week, we honor teachers and staff. Over the last two years, education has looked differently for many individuals, from virtual to in-person to a hybrid, many learning styles. The challenges that were faced will leave a lasting impact on many, both students and adults. During that time, teachers worked twice as hard for making sure that the students were safe, their needs were met, and the learning continued despite the roadblocks that the technology provided. It doesn't work all of the time. However, teachers found a way to connect with their students with the support from their building staff. So what can be done for teachers? For many teachers, the greatest reward for their job is seeing students thrive and succeed. They want to know that they have helped, and it made a difference. Teachers need to feel valued now more than ever. Many have realized that education may not be for them and are leaving the profession. We know that that challenge is real, that colleges of education are not sending out teachers to the districts because the numbers are just not there, which is impacting your ability to hire qualified candidates to fill the vacancies that are being faced from those who are leaving. OPS has phenomenal educators, constantly doing what is needed for their students. They don't ask much, but when they do ask, they are feeling not heard. For those of you who have been educators, Ms. Erdenberger, Dr. Holman, Dr. Logan, and Ms. Crackie, teaching has changed in the last five, 10, 15 years. Teachers are expected to do so much more with little planning, beat everything to that child, and still move that child along to meet their academic goals. Now, more than ever, teachers need to be lifted and shown that they are valued, heard, and supportive. Teachers are often told by their administration that students don't care how much you know until they know how much you care, which makes me think about teachers in the district. Teachers don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. You can have the best of intentions, of programs, best laid-out plans, but for it to be a true success, teachers must know you care about them too, and they are valued, that their work is needed and it is important. My ask for you tonight is simple. How will you show the teachers of this district that they are seen, valued, and heard? There is no better time than now. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, to show them that you care. As a board member stated this evening, a note, a card, even an apple goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Good evening.
Good evening. Ken Bruegeman, K-E-N-B-R-U-E-G-G-E-M-A-N-N, 6111 Belvedere Boulevard, Omaha, 68111. Board members, Dr. Logan, good evening. I wish to express strong objection to elements of the proposed Student Code of Conduct. From personal experience as a retired OPS teacher and a staff member of 49 years, the tone and approach of the Code of Conduct favors concern for the offending student over the very purpose of schools' education, or for the long-term safety of other students and staff. This proposed Code of Conduct is built on jargon and theory, not sound practical experience. Page three says that OPS is committed to alternatives to exclusionary practices that require removal of disruptive students. No. Be committed to maintaining a quality learning environment. See first to the safety of students and staff, then return the disruptive student as his or her conduct might warrant. Page four contains a telling statement. It uses the language of critical race theory and shows a general de-emphasis on producing outstanding scholars by explaining social-emotional learning as advancing educational equity and excellence. In that context, equity means mediocrity. We channel much resource to some while crippling others. Page 10 speaks to resolutions to behavior violations. Though the points are bulleted and maybe mistakenly out of order, the impact of disruption to the school environment is the fourth item listed. Impact of disruption should be your first concern. Again, where is concern for others? You have actually placed the offending student's intent above disruption to the school environment. Furthermore, these points are directed at administrators. This cripples their prerogatives in supporting staff and protecting other students. Pages 13 through 17 address levels of violation and possible responses. As I read the matrix, these four following violations do not even rise to the level of removal from the classroom. One, classroom disruption/other behavior disruptive to the school environment. Two, engaging in verbal conflict, disrupting the school environment by engaging in loud argument that includes disparaging comments or discussion of potential physical conflict. Three, bus misconduct, activity on the bus which is unsafe, refusal to follow directions of the driver or aide. And four, vulgarity/profanity, written or oral language that is disgusting or repulsive but does not constitute harassment. This is equity for you. Keep disruptors in the classroom, make everyone else miserable. And finally, page 23 contains what amounts to a statute of limitations of one year on repeated offenses. It reads in part, "Concerning a violation at any level, it may be relevant that the student has committed the same or similar violation multiple times during the same school year. Repeated violations will not be used as a primary violation." In short, this Code of Conduct is also a statement of protections for offenders at the expense of students and staff. Schools have more than enough challenge in recovering from the past two years of disrupted education. This proposed Code of Conduct is a guarantee of diminished preparedness and safety for OPS students. I thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have Cassie Gilbert. Good evening.
Good evening. Cassie Gilbert, C-A-S-S-I-G-I-L-B-E-R-T, 12735 Cryer Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144. When I entered this room this evening, the first thing that caught my eye was the screen, and it said, "May is Mental Health Awareness Month," which is exactly why I'm here. My child is an eighth grader in junior high. I may cry, so beware. During her three years in junior high, she has been bullied relentlessly at school. I have gone through the administration all three years. Sixth and seventh grade were pretty great years, and we had a wonderful assistant principal that really fought for her, followed up with her, and most importantly, continued communication with us so we could stay in contact of what was going on in the school. That was Michaela Jackson. This year is completely different. My child has been sexually assaulted at school. She has been bullied relentlessly, and now has a child telling her that she should kill herself. When I take this to the school, all I can get is, well, they denied it. Nobody heard it. There's nothing that we can do about it. This school that my child attends has perpetuated an environment that makes bullies feel comfortable, and they victimize the victims. My child's options right now are she can flip her classes and be taken out of the schedule that she knows, and be thrown into more chaos than what she's already ensued, and lose the friendships that she already has in these classes, or she can continue in her classes and continue to be victimized. We are creating an environment for victims to continue to be victimized. My choices as a parent are to watch my child go to school anxious, scared for what the day may bring, or to keep her home and worry about her scholastic ability growing up. It's a horrible place to be as a student and as a parent. I really, really believe that at this point, within this school, the administration of this school, it is failing its children. I have spoken to many parents that have children in this middle school that have always the same concerns that I have, that are getting the same exact results that I am, which is nothing. After my child was sexually assaulted, there was no follow-up with her regarding this. Not a single administrative professional in the school asked her how she was doing, did she need anything? She got counseling outside of school, but nobody followed up with her. With this most- With one of the classes that she's being bullied in, this was brought to the school's attention in January, I had a meeting with four administrative professionals, including the dean of students, assistant principal, a counselor, and the principal of the school. Again, not one single person followed up with my child to see how she was doing. When I asked the administrative staff, "Did you follow up?", their answer is, "Well, I asked her in the hall how she was doing, and she said, 'Fine.'" That's not following up with the student. That's failing a student. The school did not do its due diligence. It's created an environment that made it comfortable for a child to sexually assault another student in this class, and that's it. The child's gone from the school, and that's great, but there's no follow-up. And what does that teach our kids? When I look at bullying and look at the school, I went to StopBullying.org, which I think is a pretty good website that tries to perpetuate not bullying kids, right? So, some of the things that I pulled from here is that bullying can affect everyone. Those who are bullied or witness bullying, and bullying is linked to many negative outcomes, including impacts on mental health, substance abuse, and suicide. Kids who are bullied are more likely to experience depression, anxiety, increased feelings of sadness and loneliness, changes in sleep and eating patterns, and loss of interest. They have multiple health complaints, decreased academic achievement, and a small number of children might retaliate through other acts of violence.
One minute.
With this newest one that led me to this, this child who had threatened, who had told my child that she should kill herself, this child also told her he would like to harm other children. The school has still said there's no proof, and there's nothing that they will do about this. Again, as a parent, I stand before you, petrified, to send my child to school, a place that should be a safe haven for her, a place where she should learn and be able to grow. But instead, she's anxious. I had to pull her out of school early today because of that, and I'm scared to death of what might actually happen to her in school, instead of being excited about what she might be learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Fileman. Please excuse me if I mispronounced your last name. Okay, good, thank you.
Good evening. I got handouts for everybody there. My name is Paul Fileman, P-A-U-L, F as in Frank, E-I-L-M-A-N-N, 5152 Jones Street, Omaha, 68106. I believe Dr. Erdenberger is my OPS board member. And I want to say, Dr. Erdenberger, I learned about you from Aaron Bird. He wrote an amazing story about what you did for him in high school. I remember that two or three years ago. I've gotten to know a few folks up here. Ricky Smith, I've had some contact with. Superintendent Logan, we've met. You probably don't remember Mark Snow, we met recently. I'm a retired mental health counselor. I've got five kids, seven grandkids, one graduated from college this year, and the other one's one and a half, and grandkids. But during doing mental health for 25 years, I saw a lot. In fact, I joke that there isn't anything I haven't seen. But it also impressed me, all the things that go on in our community that affect children and families that a lot of people just don't know about. And so, three or four years ago, when I retired, I just started trying to learn more about why those things are happening, and I've learned a lot. I've made a lot of relationships. I spent a year and a half at Mountview Elementary, working with folks there. We did a volunteer program for literacy right up till COVID. I've spent the last four years volunteering at the Nebraska State Penitentiary and all the prisons in the state, except for McCook. And I've built relationships with law enforcement, Chief Schmodder, you know, and I haven't spent a lot of time dealing with the education folks, but recently, you know, I've been learning more about poverty and the overall impact of poverty on the school district. And a lot of what I've learned, you know, that's going on right now with the overcrowding situation, the prisons and stuff, really relates back to the traumatic impact of poverty on children, and the preponderance of that impact on school kids in OPS. It's just not acceptable. So, I keep working on ways to try and have some effect on that. I've collaborated, and I sent- You guys got a couple of my emails. I'll send those out. I try to only make them relevant. This will be an email, too. This is an article from The Reader a couple weeks ago, just talks about absenteeism. And the woman that just spoke talks about her daughter. That's a classic example. Mental health, stress, anxiety, kids aren't coming to school, they need support. And what I'm advocating tonight, real briefly, is just, between now and next fall, continue to use as much COVID money and resource money to build a safety net that looks like this, not like this, to catch all those kids and keep them from leaving school, from little ones all the way up. And they're usually mental health issues related, poverty issues that are related, they need advocates. The Goals Program on here gives a couple case examples of families that were supported, but it's labor-intensive. You have a caseworker that goes and advocates for the kid, meets the family, gets resources, but that's how you keep that kid in school. And so, anyway, that's all I've got for tonight. I want to introduce myself, pass this out. The last page has the data on, I think, from before, about absenteeism and the high impact of poverty. I think 94% of your absenteeism issues are of kids impacted by poverty. So, if you see an email from me, you'll know who it's from. And thanks for your time, thanks for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you for being here. Okay, moving on now to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. That is before us. Anybody?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Tielin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Head. I will be abstaining from Claim C, item I-17.
I will as well, Dr. Holman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Aye. Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Nine A.
Motion carries. Moving on now to action items. Items J one A, approval of the second reading of the Code of Conduct revisions for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and Mr. Tealyn will be sharing with us tonight. Or...
I guess, uh, Mr. Ray, is, should we move this item later, or do you, or you feel comfortable that we have the information?
I feel, I feel very comfortable.
Okay, fantastic. Leave that on. Okay, so this is, uh, second reading for, uh, changes to the Code of Conduct. There were some, the policy committee did meet and made some, uh, additional changes. I'll, uh, highlight those for you here really briefly. Uh, I've been moving around in my agenda. Hold on just a second. Mostly, uh, there was one, uh, staff change, just throughout the code, we like to make sure that we, uh, indicate whenever law enforcement may be called. So there was one additional item where that was added, uh, to make clear that that is the case in that situation. There was also an oversight in, uh, we didn't see it the first time. There wasn't time to change it for the last meeting, but, uh, some of the language around, um, student, uh, how students are referred to and student pronouns, uh, just to make it gender-neutral throughout. So, uh, those are the, uh, changes to the student Code of Conduct on second reading. Um, and those are, this is the, the, the version that is attached to the agenda is the version that the policy committee is, uh, asking for passing, uh, approval on second reading. So I've motioned for, uh, approval of the revised Code of Conduct.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Tealyn, roll call. Mr. Ray?
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to information items. Items J two A, update to policies fifty-four oh, eh, fifty-four oh three, fifty-four oh four, fifty-four oh five, fifty-four oh six, and fifty-four oh seven. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. So there is...
Excuse me, you cannot outburst during the meeting, Mr. Store. If you have a comment, you can come back next week, please. This is not the consent agenda. Mr. Store, I need for you to please have a seat. Security? Would you please help Mr. Store?
Fifty-four oh three, uh, is the first policy that the policy committee, uh, considered. No major, uh, no, there are no, uh, real policy changes there. Mostly just clarification, um, to make clear that, uh, the main, main clarification was that there was a little language that was a little bit, uh, ambiguous about exactly where a student might return if they took a leave of absence, uh, during a pregnancy. We wanted to make clear that, uh, if, they, they might return to their same grade, or they might return to the grade that they would graduate or graduate into if they came back during that same year, depending on their, uh, ability to, uh, and progress during that time. Um, we moved, and we moved a little bit of language around, but that was really the main change there. Fifty-four oh four is, uh, cooperation with law enforcement. Really here, just mostly cleanup language. Yep, cleanup language. No policy changes. No changes to fifty-four oh five. The, the committee did review it, but had no changes to the, um, policy regarding corporal punishment. Fifty-four oh six is student lockers, um, and, or it was entitled, I think, Student Lockers and Student Vehicles. It's now more broad to include student vehicles because it was, uh, pointed out that, uh, it didn't cover motorcycles or bicycles or other things that , uh, students might use to get transportation onto, uh, school grounds. And again, some other, um, sort of cleanup items on there. Fifty-four oh s, oh, and I would also point out that fifty-four oh six, uh, is, I think, pretty much verbatim, uh, put into the Code of Conduct. Since we are approving this now, if we approve it tonight, it, and we are also approving the next year's version of the Code of Conduct, it will not make it into the changes in, uh, next year's Code of Conduct. Uh, it'll, so the, the Code of Conduct will stay the same for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, and then this policy will be incorporated the next time around. And then, uh, fifty-four oh seven is student interviews, and it, I'm just gonna take a minute to talk about that because the language is a little vague, and we had some, uh, discussion about that in the policy committee, about exactly what student interviews refer to and what this was, uh, referring to. Uh, there is a whole policy on, uh, custodial in, interviews where students are, uh, being questioned by law enforcement, and they're not free to leave, and what our expectations are in those circumstances. There's also times when the police might just want to talk to a student, uh, in, uh, without that custodial, um, uh, situation. And this is, this covers that. It also covers, uh, really, I mean, it is broad, and so we, and we decided to leave it that way. It also covers, uh, you know, media, uh, any other reason that a, a student might be, uh, Child Protective Services, any reason a student might be interviewed, uh, that they really, we have to have the principal's permission before we do that. And those are the, those are the updates, and I will certainly entertain any questions or comments.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. I have a question on the, uh, fifty-four oh four, uh, with law enforcement, the last paragraph.
Yeah.
Uh, as you see, it splits, uh, school officials not required to buy students of their constitutional rights. It's the requirement of the law enforcement. However, for policy, uh, staff is supposed to contact the parents if the student's being interrogated at school, but if the student's removed off of grounds or arrested, not immediately?
Let me just, I just want to read it real quick so I understand where you're, where you're looking at.
I'm just asking, is, have you ever thought of just making that all one, where whether the student was interrogated or arrested, the parent will be called immediately? I'm not saying our administrators don't do that immediately, but in this, it says they don't have to immediately if they're arrested? Or tell the principal it doesn't need, if you read that?
I think the difference is, if they're in a, the intention would be to have notice to the parent before a custodial interview.
Yeah.
Uh, we, obviously, that's not always possible. Uh, we don't always, law enforcement does not have to tell us when they're doing that. We, that, that's an expectation we have with law enforcement, but, um, we don't, so we don't always have the power to do that, and there might be circumstances under which law enforcement needs to talk to that student right now. Uh, so I think the, the goal is always to have that notification out there beforehand on a custodial investigation, and then there's the second part of that language is if, uh... Immediately notify the guardians in the case a student is arrested or otherwise removed. So I think, and, and that's, I think that's going to, there's, as soon as we know that, that should go to, to parents as notification. So I'm, I guess I'm missing the gap. Where's the... So we're trying to do it ahead of time for custodial inter, uh, interrogations, but, and, and then notify immediately once we know if they're arrested.
Okay, so we wouldn't be able to? I apologize. I, Ms. Redden, thought that we did not have to contact them until after.
Yeah, we do, yeah. Thanks.
As if they were moved off grounds, and it was now in the custody of the police, and they would contact, that we took your child from school?
No, the, those are really just about conversations.
Makes sense.
And, uh, right, interrogations. Any other questions?
Yes, I have, I have a question. Could you clarify again why it's being delayed in going into the, the Code of Conduct?
Oh, uh, so the Code of Conduct, at some point, we have to kind of take our hands off of the Code of Conduct and allow them to print the handbooks and everything else that goes into be, getting ready for the next school year, and we are at that point. So the...
Okay, so logistics, basically?
That's the entirety of it, is logistics. Yeah, right.
Ms. Cracky?
I'm going to follow up with that, and can we insert something in there, or something that if we are making that change, because some of those changes might be important to someone, and if we've already passed it here, but it's not in effect, it bothers me that they cannot get the, um, advantage of whatever that might be.
So what I guess I would say is the student Code of Conduct is, you know, set, does set out expectations, and we try to give our parents and students
Right.
Notice of, of what we expect and how we might respond.
Right, and the principals still add their part to their own book in that building, too. But I know that they're in the printing stage, and then they go out, but they have all summer to print that?
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact schedule, but I take the, the, people that are in charge of that at their word that this is the time that we need to stop. And I think the, the, the thing that I want to stress, though, is that it doesn't real, the, the student Code of Conduct isn't policy, right?
Right, right.
It is, it is what we're sending out to students to let them know what's going on. If we needed to, you know, rely on these kinds of, uh, searches, I think we can do that now. It doesn't need to be in the Code of Conduct. It's just not, we want to have it there so that everybody knows about it.
Well, and I want the parents to know that i, if it isn't there, it's somewhere.
Yeah, and it is in policy. It will be in our policy. Uh, it just won't be in the Code of Conduct until the following year. Yeah. Okay. To be clear, it is, it is board policy, but it is not quite, it's not quite in the same way. It has other purposes and uses. And so we, we will have, we will have an inconsistency for that year. But we will have that in policy. The, the, the changes will have been made in policy, in our, in our board policies. It, it's, it's something that happens, and it is something that happens every year. Anytime we make policy changes that affect the Code of Conduct, they don't get incorporated until the next year. This one just happens to be right on top of the, the deadline.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Also, uh, just to help, uh, Mr. Tealyn, uh, Ms. Cracky, the, each school also has their own documents they send students, so sometimes, I've seen in the past, that the school would mention those things in there
Right.
Um, just to kind of update, because there have been times in the past that the code has not been out as, uh, on time as it is today, which is amazing.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on now to item J two B, policy committee update, and our very own Mr. Tealyn again.
And really, it's, these are the policies that we've been working on, are the, are the policies that we, uh, have on, um, oh, you know, I suppose, are these, are these on for first reading? Did I forget to make a motion?
The information.
Oh, they're just on for information. We'll have them as first reading next time around. Great. So, yeah, these are the policies that we've been working on. I don't think there's really anything else to add. Thank you.
Great. Okay, moving on now to I, item J two C, budget and audit committee update, and I will be sharing that tonight. We had our meeting, um, on April the twenty-seventh, in attendance, myself, Mr. Snow, Mr. Head, and Mr. Tealyn, and we also had, um, district representatives, Dr. Logan, Mr. Ray, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Ryan, and Mrs. Rycostky. Hopefully I pronounced that correctly. We, uh, management shared the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one internal control deficiencies, gave an update on the two deficiencies cited in last year's audit and remediation efforts, which are currently underway. With regards to the two thousand eighteen bond issue update, um, the district issued four tranches of the bonds between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two. The final tranche was then issued on April the sixth in another successful auction. Uh, we experienced favorable market conditions over those three and a half years, uh, realizing an average total interest cost of two point six nine percent for all bonds issued. And then due to all the bond selling, um, for a premium, only three hundred and eighty-one million of par value bonds needed to be sold to generate the four hundred and ten million of net proceeds. So, doing very well in that regard. Two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two year-to-date results and full year reforecast, management provided an update on the year-to-date financial results and the full year reforecast. There was approximately sixteen million of expense favorability and salaries and benefits, and transportation and staffing shortages are the primary reason for the savings. Management also presented a plan for use of these funds and expects to be at budget by the end of the year. Two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget upcoming activities. Um, the budget office is continuing to work through round one budget compilation, and the committee will get an opportunity to see the preliminary numbers, um, at the June meeting. ESRS audit update for calendar year twenty twenty-one. Audit responsibility shifted from Sim Johnson to the Auditor of Public Accounts, also known as APA, as a result of LB one forty-seven, which was passed last year. Field work to wrap up in the next couple of weeks, and ABA, excuse me, APA is to present the findings to the committee in June and to the full board in July. ESTR spending update. Management shared that thirty point five million of ESTR's one, two, and three monies have been spent to date. Um, twenty-four point four million has been submitted and reimbursed by the state, and management submits reimbursement, excuse me, reimbursement requests as a dollars warrant, no less frequent than monthly. Two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two excess cash reserve projects. Uh, reviewed the progress on the additional projects included in this year's budget that utilize excess cash reserves from the prior year. We spent about six million, um, year-to-date versus a budget of forty point nine million. There are no major concerns about spending progress as the budget is for two major items, curriculum adoptions, and supplies and materials for our new schools. And activities in these two areas are well underway, and management feels some money will be spent by year end. And with regards to claim approval process, uh, due to statutory requirements, management presented ideas for modifying how the board authorizes and approves payroll and payroll-related activity. Um, so the board will be engaged in the near future for input, uh, and approval regarding this process. And that's all that I have as far as the budget and audit committee update. Sure.
I don't know if this is questions for you. I suspect it's for, uh, Mr. Roberts. We, uh, there was a reference in there to the ESTR's reimbursements, and so we submit them as needed, no less than monthly. I mean, that's, what is, do we submit them to the NDE, and then it goes federal? Do I remember that correctly?
Yeah.
And what is the turnaround? When, when we submit for reimbursement, approximately, how long does it take to go through that process?
Each one's a little bit different. So, yes, we do submit reimbursements to NDE, just like we do on the federal grants. They don't go up to the federal level because the state's administering those programs. It really depends on the reimbursement. The state's been very good. They turn it fairly quickly. Usually within two weeks, let's say, uh, we've had reimbursements in three or four days. As long as we get the documentation correct, so they're going through and they're checking off versus our application, all the activities, we're seeking reimbursement. Once they've ticked and tied everything, the reimbursement takes place very quickly.
That's great. That's much faster than I expected, so...
Yeah, they're great partners.
Yay, that's super. Good to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Roberts? I can assist as well. Mr. Snow?
Uh, thank you, President Dr. Holman. Uh, Mr. Roberts, could you give us, like, a headway on the budget for next fall? Like, what to look up, like, the dates that are coming up? Because I know it's starting budget season for next school year, and...
Yeah, I, I thought you were gonna ask me for numbers already, and we're not quite there yet.
You probably already have them. You just don't, you're not a hundred percent on it.
We're getting close. So I think, uh, the round one budgets, right now, we're working through all the schools. We probably need another three to four weeks on those, and then we'll kind of have a good sneak peek as to what the general fund's gonna look like for next year. So the plan would be to present that to the Budget and Audit Committee in June at our June meeting, probably the week of the twentieth, but that's yet to be scheduled. And then we will have monthly committee meetings, as we do every year, June, July, and August, leading right up until finalization of the budgets in August. So, um, the committee will get the first peek and then the full board shortly thereafter at the June and July meetings.
Thank you. And I knew most of it. I just want for the public to know that.
Absolutely.
We have a lot of things moving at the same time, so thank you.
Vice President Erdenberger?
Speaking of informing the public, uh, Mr. Roberts, one of the last conversations that we had on this topic, I think you were just about to meet with the consortium of public budget folks, because I know that there's a legislation that requires a, uh, a, a community budget meeting, if you will, of all taxing authorities has, and they, that they need to do that before we can approve ours, and, but we have, still have to get ours in on time. And so I know that that was something that you were still trying to collect information. Do you know anything more about what the timing on all that is going to be?
So Douglas County's got the lead responsibility in that, and yes, there was new legislation passed a year ago that if your property... And yes, there was new legislation passed a year ago that if your property tax asking is more than the allowable growth rate, which is roughly 2%, as a political subdivision, you're required to participate in a joint hearing. And that hearing, the county reached out to pretty much all those entities this week and started to kick around dates. So under the legislation, it has to happen between the 17th of September and the 28th. Budgets are due to the state on the 30th. So right now, they're kind of leaning toward the 20th and 21st as the dates to hopefully have this hearing take place. And as they get the dates finalized and input from everyone over the next week and a half, they're going to start narrowing the field.
And then we do our final approval after that community budget meeting, basically?
With some clarification legislation that passed this year, it requires the joint hearing to take place before the board can vote on the budget. So yes, our budget approval will have to take place after the hearing. And then we'll file our budgets by the 30th, or on the 30th.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, before we move on to receipt of reports, Mr. Teal has an amendment.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider J 1A and the student code of conduct. It came to our attention sort of late, and I forgot to mention it when we were reviewing it. There was in the original, not the original, in the first, in the version, the first reading, perhaps even on information, the language around fighting serious read, citing that a student was defending himself or herself when responding with a physical with physical combat may not be a defense against a charge of fighting serious. There was a previous version that said is, and that version got used in the one that was uploaded to our agenda. So at current, the one that is uploaded to our agenda says is, it should have said may. So my motion is to reconsider J 1. I guess the first thing would be a motion to reconsider. And if I could get a second on that, and we could.
Second.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Head said it first. Okay, here's a motion by Mr. Teal and seconded by Mr. Head. Discussion?
Dr. Holman, Mr. Teal, can you reread your motion?
For this, I'm going to say at this moment, it's just a motion to reconsider J 1A.
Can you read the J, the pardon? Yeah, okay.
Approval of the second reading of code of conduct provisions.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Nine I.
Motion carries.
So that is, again, the explanation is that we're going to just change my is to may in the draft version that is attached to the code of conduct. It would reflect what we did in the, certainly the first reading, perhaps information item two. So my motion now is to to adopt the draft code of conduct with the changes that were reflected in it, and also changing the word on page 30 in the section Fighting Serious and the sentence that starts citing that the student was defending himself or herself, changing the is to a may.
Could you read what the sentence will now read as?
Yes. Citing that the student was defending themselves, sorry, it's very small, when responding with physical combat may not be a defense against a change of fighting serious.
So there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Nine I.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on now to receipt of reports. We have one report on the agenda this evening. Item K 1, Head Start Monthly Board Report for March 2022. Vice President Erdenberger?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Scott Roberts, Charles Wakefield, and legal counsel, negotiations and legal advice.
There is a motion to go into closed session by Vice President Erdenberger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Head. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith? Snow?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger? Nine I.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Scott Roberts, Charles Wakefield, and legal counsel, negotiations and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:58 PM.